The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Dankert, we need you to roll call, please.
Mayor Steam.
Present.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Present.
Councilmember Helly.
Present.
Waller.
Present.
King.
Present.
Poshusta.
Present.
Fisher.
Present.
Baskin.
Present.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item one is a motion for adopting the agenda with the additions and the backup information. We need a motion.
So moved.
Second. On favor.
Aye.
Item number two is a motion approving the minutes from February 4th, 2019. You need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Proposed. We have no recognitions or awards. Number four, consent agenda, excuse me, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second. On favor.
Aye.
Proposed. Number five, under public hearings, number five is a resolution, public hearing on street improvements on Oakland Avenue Place Southeast, 10th Street to 11th Street Southeast, project 19105. Stephen and Mitch? Where's, oh, there's Mitch.
Yeah, so Mitch will do presentations on the next five items, but I just wanted to let you know that a lot of times each year we'll have kind of an informal meeting with all the residents before the council meeting, just trying to give them a more informal time to talk, ask questions where they don't have to get on TV and speak and things like that. So we'd held that last Wednesday. And just to give you an idea, we, on this first project that Mitch is going to talk about, we're assessing one property owner, but we sent out letters to the greater neighborhood letting businesses know of the project. So we had five property owners in attendance for the first item number five. Item number six, we sent out 35 notifications to adjacent property owners for a street reconstruction, and we had four property owners represented at that informational meeting. Item number seven, we sent out 78, impacting 78 property owners. That's one of our larger projects for this year, and we also had four property owners represented at that meeting. Item number eight was 60 property owners in that neighborhood, and we had four represented at our informational meeting. And then finally, item number nine, 6th Street Northeast, we sent out 15 notices and we had four properties represented at that one as well. So we, that's, that's, tends to be typical. We do get fairly low turnout unless it's a controversial project. Most of our projects are pretty straightforward each year from year to year. We have a pretty standard program. But we do have some residents here tonight from different projects, and Mitch is going to do the same presentation than he did a week ago at that informational meeting, and then we'll turn it over to council or public, try to answer any questions anybody might have.
Mitch?
Hi, everybody.
Okay.
First project I'm going to talk about today is...
(knocking) (laughing)
It's pretty powerful.
Good thing you're an engineer.
I'll see if that works. Is Oakland Place Southeast from 10th Street to 11th Street Southeast. And here's kind of a picture of where this project is going to be taking place. It's the railroad underpass, and we have a lot of issues with flooding there, and people will recognize it as that location. First, I'll just show you some existing pictures. You can see there's a lot of cracked pavement, places where we've patched asphalt in the concrete, more cracked pavement, catch basins that are deteriorated and failing and creating drainage issues. So what we're looking to do with this project is remove and replace the existing concrete, remove and replace the sidewalk throughout the project. There's a railing along the sidewalk as well that we look to remove and replace. We'd upgrade the sidewalk pedestrian ramps to ADA compliant pedestrian ramps, and then restoring the grass boulevards. And then for underground improvements, we're looking to improve the storm sewer in this area. As I said before, it's prone to flooding, both when the rivers flood and when we get just heavy rains. So we're looking to improve the drainage there. And then we have some sanitary sewer issues on this project that we're going to fix when we tear up the street. And then Austin Utilities also has some work that they plan to do in the intersections of this project. The benefits of the project, we'll improve the riding safety, improve the drainage, it'll make things a little more visually appealing with the new sidewalk railing and just the bright shiny pavement. It'll decrease maintenance costs for both our pavement and our underground utilities, and then it'll improve pedestrian safety with our new pedestrian ramps and new sidewalk. So the schedule, we're looking to begin this project after school is out in June, and then hope to, weather depending, complete it before school starts in the fall, just to minimize the impact to the bus routes and parent drop off to Ellis and IJ and Nevlin Schools. So during the project, we're going to try and keep traffic open as much as possible. At the beginning, we'll reduce lane, reduce traffic to one lane in each direction on the north half of the roadway while we work on the south half. But at a certain point, we're going to have to close everything down just because it's such a constricted workspace underneath the bridge there that it would be unsafe to have traffic and construction going on at the same time. So we'll create a detour to get traffic around the underpass. As you can see on the picture here, we'll route through traffic coming in from the east, south to 4th Avenue, and then up to 10th Place to the stoplight, and then continue on into town on Oakland. And then we'll have alternate routes for businesses to the north on both east and west sides of the railroad tracks. The estimated project cost is just under $1 million, $950,000. The project will be funded by Assessments, state funding and stormwater and wastewater treatment funds. And like Stephen mentioned, there were, there's only one property owner that is being assessed on this project, and the total assessment revenue is $13,400. We have set assessment rates that the council approved earlier in December, I believe, and for a commercial street like Oakland Place, our rate is $66.75 per linear foot of frontage. So for example, a 50-foot lot would have an assessment of $3,337.50. And then we also have assessment rates for sidewalk panels, depending on their thickness, and you can see those rates there. Do you have a question? Oh, sorry, I thought you were... Okay. And then the assessment payment options for the residents, we send out the assessment bill in late August or early September. They can pay the amount in full by October 31st without interest. They can pay at least half of the amount by October 31st without interest, and then the remainder is added to their property taxes over a 15-year period with a 5% interest rate. And then the third option is to not pay anything by October 31st, and the entire balance is applied to their property taxes over a 15-year period with that 5% interest rate. And we do have a financial assistance program for those over 65, and they financially qualify and live on the property, they can have the assessment deferred with interest until they sell the property. And I keep people updated of the project. On our city website, we have, I post weekly project updates, and then we also do periodic Facebook updates. And then if there's anything really important that everyone needs to know right away, we do flyers door-to-door, so everyone knows right away. Questions?
Great.
Mitch, will the railing match the Oakland Place Bridge theme and the look of that railing?
There's not been anything determined on the look or style of the railing as of right now. So we'd probably bring that to the council to decide.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? This is a public hearing. Is anybody here to talk to the council on this item tonight? If not, Stephen?
There's just one more thing I'd like to emphasize a little bit more. Mitch, could you go back a couple slides to where it's raining and we have the city employee standing there? So this is last summer and early springs, it seems like we have a lot of heavy rains that we'll get a two-inch rain and we'll have to close down the underpass. This is one main reason why we're upgrading the storm sewer. The underpass will still flood when we have, when the Dobbin's Creek comes up and inundates the whole area, but what we're, so that will continue to happen. What we're going to try to do with this project is minimize the amount of water that gets to the underpass and causes us to have to close it for these types of situations. So two different issues there. One is a localized rain event that we're trying to design for. The other is flooding from Dobbin's Creek that we can't prevent. So kind of two different situations there that I wanted to emphasize.
If you cross there a lot, people know if it's a heavy rain, just go around because you know it's going to be flooded. It's pretty steady. Is there anybody that wanted to address the council on this tonight, then? If not, we need a resolution for item number five.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Poshusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number six is a resolution. It's a public hearing on street improvements on 14th Street Southeast, 4th Avenue Southeast to North, 1st Avenue Southeast, project 18101. Mitch?
So, second project tonight is 14th Street Southeast from 4th Avenue Southeast to just north of 1st Avenue. And these PowerPoints, they're all very repetitive. Once we go on, I'll, so I'll skip over and not read every slide again, but we'll get some pictures of the existing conditions on 14th Street. You can see there's a lot of potholes, cracked pavement. Pavement's just really deteriorated to the point where we can't really maintain it anymore. So this is mainly what's driving this project, is the surface condition of the roadway. So what we're looking to do is remove and replace the asphalt, and then for curb and gutter, we're going to remove and replace the deficient curb and gutter. So not every curb and gutter panel will be replaced. It's only the ones that are in bad shape, similar to the project we did on the mayor's street last year. And then we will also have sidewalk and pedestrian ramp improvements. For underground work, we have some storm sewer upgrades as well as some sanitary sewer repairs to take care of, as well as a underground tile for connecting sump pumps and serving drainage for the roadway itself. And then Austin Utilities again has work on the water main and some underground electric on the project. Schedule for this project, we're hoping to get started in mid-July, and it'll take approximately three months, depending on weather, again. This project's a little different where the last, the Oakland Place project, there weren't really any residential properties on the street. This one, there's many houses, so residents will not be able to access their driveways during construction. They'll have to park on adjacent streets. We tell them to remove any boats, RVs, campers, things like that, that they wish to use during construction so they're not stranded on their property. And then we can provide handicap accessible parking spaces as close to their house as possible. And then garbage and recycling pickup is made on adjacent streets, and a few people have boulevard sprinkler systems, so they're required to mark those or remove those prior to the project. Again, the project benefits are listed above. You can take a look at those. Estimated project cost is $405,000, and this one is funded by Assessments, local street fund, stormwater utility fund, and wastewater utility fund. I believe there were 35 properties being assessed on this project with a total assessment revenue of $97,600. Again, the assessment rates are listed above. The difference between 14th Street and Oakland Place is the, the assessment rate is, this is a residential street, so we apply the residential assessment rate, which is $46.75. So a 50-foot lot would see an assessment of $2,337.50. And again, the same assessment payment options and same project updates.
Counsel, any questions on this project? If not, it's a public hearing. Is anybody here that wants to address the council on this project? If not, we need a resolution ordering improvement, approving plans and specifications of ordering advertisements for bids.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Poshusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number seven is a public hearing on street improvements on 9th Street Southwest, 1st Avenue to 6th Avenue Southwest, 10th Street Southwest, 1st Avenue to 6th Avenue Southwest, and 11th Street Southwest, 1st Avenue to 2nd Avenue Southwest, project 19102. Mitch?
So this is our project in the southwest quadrant of the city this year, 9th, 10th, and 11th Streets. You can see on the map, we've got two long blocks on 9th and 10th Streets from 1st Avenue to 6th Avenue, and then a one-block section on 11th Street. These streets were likely constructed in 1950s, so they're in dire need of replacement. You can see all the potholes and bird baths in the gutter line, cracked pavement everywhere, the curb's in really bad shape. Just clearly time for something new here. So on this project, we will be removing the pavement and all of the curb and gutter, so it's a complete reconstruction. We'll widen the roadway from either 34 or, from 30 feet to 34 or 36 feet, depending on the location. Like 11th Street Southwest will be 36 feet wide, and 9th Street from 1st to 2nd Avenue will be 36 feet wide, the rest will be 34 feet. We'll install new curb and gutter, new pavement, again, fixing the bad sidewalk panels and upgrading pedestrian ramps. Underground utility work, we have some storm sewer work, and again, sanitary sewer repairs to make. And then Austin Utilities also has work on this project for water main and underground We're going to phase this project as a two-phase project, just because it's 11 blocks, and that's a lot to take on at one time. So we'll begin the project in early to mid-May with 10th and 11th Street being torn up initially, and then once we get a head start on those, probably in mid-July, we will begin work on 9th Street. And each phase will, again, take approximately three and a half months, depending on weather. And same impacts to residents, we will, they will not be allowed to access their driveways with their vehicles during the project, and all their garbage and recycling have to be picked up on side streets. Same project benefits as before. The total project cost is estimated at $1.4 million, again, funded by Assessments, local street fund, stormwater utility fund, and the wastewater treatment fund. And we set, are proposing to assess 78 properties on this project for a total revenue of $218,000. The one difference in this project compared to 14th Street is the curb and gutter assessment. We only assess curb and gutter the first time that it's ever installed, so there are a handful of properties on this project that have never had curb and gutter in front of their property, and we will be installing it with this project, so they will be assessed $16.50 for that first curb and gutter installation. And the same payment options, and that's all I have.
Counsel, anything for this project? If not, once again, it's a public hearing. Is anybody here to address the city on this? If not, we need a resolution ordering improvement, approving plans and specifications of ordering advertisements for bids.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Poshusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number eight is a public hearing on street improvements on 6th Street Northwest, 8th Avenue, 13th Avenue Northwest, and 11th Avenue Northwest, 4th Street to 8th Street Northwest, project 19103. Mitch?
Okay, this is the continuation of a project that we started, not the same project that we started last year, but the same neighborhood, we're just kind of moving west on the neighborhood here. So last year, we worked on 5th Street and 12th Avenue. This year, it'll be 6th Street and 11th Avenue, just to the west. Again, existing conditions, very deteriorated pavement, lots of potholes and cracks everywhere. The curb and gutter is in poor shape. You can see ponding where water stands and doesn't drain. And again, just, it's time for this street to be replaced. And Rebecca, you are on 11th Avenue, correct?
Yes, this is my street.
Okay. So what we'll be doing on this project, very similar to the 9th, 10th, and 11th Street Southwest project, where we're removing all the pavement, all the curb and gutter, widening the, widening 6th Street to 34 feet, and 11th Avenue will remain the existing width because it's already 36 feet wide. We'll install new curb and gutter and upgrade pedestrian ramps and sidewalks. Underground, we have a little more storm sewer work on this project and a little more sanitary sewer work on the project as well. Austin Utilities, they only have one block of water main to replace on 6th Street, so that should help the project move along a little quicker, and the entire length of 11th Avenue will be replaced for water main. And there are also a few underground electrical crossings that Austin Utilities will be taking care of. So again, this will be a two-phase project. We will begin on 6th Street in mid-May or when weather allows us, if the snow ever melts. And then we will continue on with 11th Avenue in June, probably mid to late June, depending on weather, again. And then roughly three and a half months for each phase of this project as well. Same benefits as all the others. The estimated cost is $1,175,000, funded by the same funds as the other projects. We are assessing 60 properties with this project, and the revenue is $215,000. And again, the same residential assessment rate, and again, there are a couple of properties that do not have curb and gutter currently, so they will be assessed curb and gutter as Same payment options, and that is all I have.
Counsel, anybody? If public hearing, anybody here to address the city on this issue? Okay. If not, we need a resolution ordering improvement, approving plans and specifications of ordering advertising for bids.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Poshusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number nine is a public hearing on street improvements on 6th Street Northeast, 30th Avenue to 36th Avenue Northeast, project 19106. Stephen?
So 6th Street Northeast is on the north side of town, just before you get out of town, from 36, or 30th Avenue to not quite 36th Avenue, but about 1,800 feet in total length. And we have split this project into two zones, we kind of call it, the north zone and the south zone. The south zone in red is currently gravel, and the north zone is two inches of asphalt pavement. So what we plan to do would be widen the south zone from 17 feet currently to 22 feet. We would add a little aggregate base or gravel, and then we would pave four inches of asphalt over the top of that to create the new road and bring it up to city standards. And then the north zone, we have two kind of options. The first would be to just take the existing pavement and overlay new asphalt two inches on top of that. And then the second option would be to mill that existing asphalt off and mix that, those millings in with the existing aggregate, and then pave four inches of additional asphalt on top of that. Both, both north and south zones, for both options would require a little bit of work at the ends of driveways to make their, the driveways matching with the new pavement elevation. And then we'd also restore the grass boulevards throughout the project. The schedule, we would have this project take place in May or June, kind of depending on the contractor's schedule, but we would require them to have it completed by June 14th. And it should only take about one week. It's a really quick project, shouldn't take too long. Impacts to the residents, this one's a little different where they would have access to their driveways throughout the project except during those paving operations, when it's actually being paved. And then there may be a few conflicts with mailboxes, and we would require the contractor to take care of those and not damage them or relocate them as necessary. So there's kind of the breakdown of the three options. Estimated cost for the north zone would be roughly $57,000, or excuse me, the south zone, $57,000. The north zone base bid, so that'd be the two-inch overlay, would cost about $28,000. And then the second option, which would be the four inches of asphalt, would be an additional $38,000 for the north zone. So if we went with a four-inch thick pavement section on the north zone, it would be roughly $70,000, just short of $70,000 for the north zone.
Do they do those at a separate time, obviously, right?
No, we do it at the same time.
Why would the, I guess my question is, why would the alternate bid be so much higher if we're just laying another two inches?
Because we have the additional milling of the existing pavement. We would mill that and grind it up and turn that into rock to be added as a base, and then there'd be some additional driveway work, too, because we'd be raising that pavement a little more than under the base bid.
Okay.
And then we would propose assessing 100% of the project cost to the adjacent properties. This is where it gets a little tricky. It's not quite like our other projects where it's just a, the set rate that we apply to the frontage. This one, we divided it into the two zones and are assessing the cost for the north zone to the residents, to the properties on the north zone, and the cost for the south zone to the properties on the south. And then we, since the lots are so large in this area, they're 200 to 300 feet of frontage, we took half the cost for each zone and divided them so they were applied per property, and then the other half of the cost divided them based on frontage. So we'll look at the south zone first, where it's the gravel currently. If you take the estimated project cost and divide it per property, or half the, half the estimated cost and divide it per property, it would be $4,800 per property. And then the remaining half of the cost, divided that by the total frontage, and it would be $20.44 per foot. And then you, if, example of a 200-foot lot, the assessment would be $8,890. And we took that same principle where you take half the cost and apply it to each property and half the cost and apply it to the frontage, and apply those to the north zone for both options, and you get, for the base and the alternate, so that would mean the four-inch pavement section, for the north residents, it'd be $7,600 for a 200-foot lot, and it'd be $3,200 for just the two-inch overlay. Again, same payment options for the assessments and same project updates. I'm guessing there'll be a few more questions with this project.
Counsel, any questions? You may have questions as we go on. I know people are here for this. This is the project that you're here for, so what we're doing tonight is just answering questions. We're not making any determinations. That comes, Stephen, when does that come?
That'll be, the assessment hearing will be held on March 18th.
March 18th, and that'll be, yeah, right here, so...
And before we open it up to the public, could I just add a little bit more history of why we're doing this project like this? So these property owners were annexed into the city in 2009, and about that same time, 2009, 2010, we extended sanitary sewer to these property owners to eliminate failing septic systems. So nine or 10 years ago, these property owners were assessed $15,590 for sanitary sewer, plus they had additional cost to extend that sewer from their, from where it was in the road back to their house. So they had a substantial sanitary sewer assessment nine, 10 years ago. We've, we've waited a while, and now we are proposing a project... We've, we've waited a while, and now we are proposing a project at this time because we wanted to get ahead of this, this northerly section that only has a two-inch asphalt section. Our, our roadways are, in town, are built with a minimum of four inches of asphalt. Four inches of asphalt and six inches of rock. We feel that that's a good standard, that is feasible, and yet will last a long time. We've talked a lot about how long roads last recently with counsel on different things. And with that two-inch section to the north there, it's, it's starting to break up, and we wanted to try and propose a project to the neighbors, to the residents, before that asphalt was, was too far gone to save. As we've looked in, into it a little bit more, we think that it may already be too far gone to save. That's why we're proposing that alternate, where we grind that asphalt up, turn it into aggregate base, and then put a four-inch asphalt, four inches of asphalt over it, along with the existing section to the south. So from a engineering standpoint, it would be our recommendation to go with kind of the most expensive project, where we are putting four inches of asphalt over the entire thing. We think we'll get the best life out of that design. The other reason why we are proposing 100% assessment of the project cost to the adjacent property owners is because we feel that the area should be brought up to a city standard before we apply our normal assessment policy. We want, we feel that the roadway should be brought up to a minimum of four inches of asphalt before we apply that regular city standard. Looking back to other projects that are similar to this one, would go back to kind of the Austin Acres area, which was annexed in the 80s, sanitary sewer was extended at that time, gravel roads in many of those Austin Acres neighborhoods. And then later, in the 90s and early 2000s, we came back and we paved them with four inches of asphalt, and those areas were assessed 100% of the asphalt cost to upgrade from a gravel road to four inches of asphalt, bringing them up to that city standard. That initial cost was 100% borne by the adjacent property owners. The other thing that I would compare this to is a development, where if a developer comes into town, we require them to build the roads to a city standard before we take them over and maintain them on into the future. In this area, these roads were annexed as gravel. It's our recommendation to charge them, to bring them up to a city standard of four inches of asphalt, and then in the future, some, hopefully some long range in the future, 40, 50 years down the road, then the city policy would apply for future reconstruction.
What's the lifespan of these two different things? You say it's more cost-effective to do the four inch. What if we do it the other way? What's the difference in lifespan?
You know, and.
You know, I know there's no hard concrete.
Just a two-inch overlay would have a lifespan of 10 to 15 years. Of a four-inch asphalt reconstructed street, we guarantee that those will last 35 years, so there's a big difference there in lifespan.
Okay, counsel, give me a chance again after we go to the audience. I know people have questions. Just raise your hand, step up to the podium and tell us who you are and what your, what your concerns are. Yeah, yes ma'am.
My name is Linda Hirsch. My husband, Paul, and I have owned three of the lots on the project. And we had a meeting with the residents, 10 of the 12 residents this week to, and so I'm talking about the primary issue that we had that is represented by the people here, and they can show it, show their hands. Eight of them are here, I realize. The primary.
Everybody raise your hand for this project.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the primary issue we had was with the 100% assessment. And our reasoning, the reasons we were asking for an assessment that is what a standard assessment is for city residents, we were annexed into the city in 2009, so we're already city residents, not asking to be annexed. The city knew the condition of the road when we were annexed. We're not, you know, a development organization. We have our developer or developing lots that have to meet the requirement. We're already in the city and have been paying property taxes for this many years, eight-plus years, nine years. And then therefore, our taxes have been helping street projects and improvements in the city, and like everyone, some we benefit from and some we don't. And so therefore, in our view, it's unwarranted to assess this differently than Austin residents, you know, that the standard assessment rate is. So the, I mean, show of hands of those that are here that agree with that view. Okay? And so that 100% assessment versus what the standard rate is for our residents affects our support of the project.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, is there, how many, how many households are we affecting, Stephen, in this project?
Fifteen.
And how many are here tonight?
Well, there are 12 owners. I would say, Steve, 12 owners, and eight of us are here.
That's about half.
No. Eight of the 12 are here.
Okay, okay, good. And there's nobody, anybody, what you're asking for is a different assessment. You're not saying you don't want the project, you want a different assessment.
That's correct. I mean, I think, yes, we have a, we're not opposed to the project, just the assessment percentage.
Okay. Stephen, what about, I mean, we have trouble on other areas in Lansing with bringing the roads up. We can't plow them because the roads aren't up to the city standards. Are we having that issue out here?
Those other areas that have been brought up are actually private roads.
Okay.
Where, where there isn't any public right-of-way. Those roads are, I think you're referencing the Woodhaven area. Those roads are about 12 feet wide, they're private roadways. That'd be a different situation than this.
Okay. Anybody else? I'm assuming you're all going to agree with her on this. Yes, sir, come on up and give us your name and your address.
Well, I'm Paul Hirsch.
Oh, go ahead.
So the difficulty that we got in our area is we do, as Stephen has mentioned, being we were in the county or the Lansing township, we had to have acre, acre and a half to two-acre lots. So we've got extreme, you know, we've got a lot of street frontage. And we happen to own three of these parcels.
How long have you had those?
20 years. And so our assessments are right around 30,000, just for the road. And we were, when this sewer project that Stephen mentioned also came through, I had a total of 11 lots at that time, which is like $200,000. So now I've got another 30,000, so I've got 230,000 sitting here. What do I have? I have a road and a sewer line, you know, so that's, it's a quite a burden on, on some of us.
But you had 11 lots, right?
I had to sell them.
And I imagine that some of the people here probably live on some of those 11 lots when they were developed, or where they developed. Now you've got eight are gone, so were they developed or?
No, well, I, no, there's only.
It's a deeper area then.
There's other areas. So there's only, I only, I had four on this street at that time, and I sold one of them, which Mr. Campbell has.
Stephen, I don't, I mean, what we do is we, Stephen, as, we were all here for that, or we were for the last, when you were next, but go ahead.
So, so the next steps with this project would be, is for counsel to do, we've done that, well, first, with this project, Mitch talked about all the curb and gutter, the sidewalks, all the things that go into those other residential street reconstruction projects. When we talk about the cost for this project, we are building, and normally our city standard is for a 36-foot-wide roadway. You could see from Mitch's presentations before that with all the trees and different things, some of those residential neighborhoods, we're only able to get to 32 to 34 feet wide. In this case, what we're proposing for this neighborhood is no sidewalks, no curb and gutter, just a 22-foot-wide asphalt pavement, which is similar to the character of their neighborhood. They have ditches, things like that. So we're not proposing with these costs to bring them up to, you know, a regular city standard, but more just a pavement thickness for a city standard. After, at the next council meeting on, on March 4th, it was our intent to bring a paving assessment policy to you to consider. So taking on the input that you've heard tonight, it would be our intent to bring this assessment policy for this specific project to you on Monday, and unless we hear different direction from you tonight, it was our intent to bring that back to you as 100% of the project cost be borne by the adjacent property owners. So if, that is our intent. If you want us to change it, vary from that, let us know, and we can modify those things. Also, if there are, if we want to stick to the 100%, and property owners are against that, we, we don't have to do the project this year. It's, there isn't any underground work that would go along with it. The gravel road would stay gravel. The two-inch asphalt section would continue to deteriorate as it currently is, but nothing would really change. There isn't, a lot of our other projects, there's underground water main or sewer, storm sewer, that are also driving these projects. A gravel road is a little bit more for us, it's a little unique for us to maintain. We don't have very many gravel roads in the city, but we can add rock to it, we can belay it periodically. So it's, from a, from a city standpoint, we would still continue to, to plow the snow, grade the road, everything like that. So there's, there are options if there are a large majority of property owners that are against the 100% cost, if counsel wants to stick with that.
So we have the option of doing it 100%, not doing it, or changing the assessment rate?
Correct.
Have we changed assessment rates before? Have we lowered them for projects like this?
Well.
You said in Austin Acres.
Yeah, this is a unique project where we would set a specific policy for this project and how we would assess them.
Okay.
And it would, and that policy would only apply to this project. It wouldn't apply to those, because it's so much different with what we're constructing. Again, no curb, no sidewalk, things like that.
Gives us a lot of flexibility.
It does.
Okay. Okay, anybody else? I, yes, sir. Thank you.
My name's Jim Campbell, and I live out in the area, in the gravel section. I guess my concern I have is why nine, why nine years after we were annexed, now it's an issue? And I'm not aware, was there any discussion before we were annexed that this was a requirement?
Wasn't a requirement.
Come up to standard.
It's not a requirement now.
Well, but we're being held to that standard that we got to come up to, the city standard.
Well, I think that was assumed when, you know, during the annexation. Stephen, is that being correct?
Was it?
That it's assumed that you're going to try and bring streets up? I mean, it's your street. If, you know, if, if we didn't, you know, we don't have to do it.
Well, I guess it feels like we're kind of blindsided nine years after we were annexed, and then we're told, you got to have this cost now. And the sewer assessment was more like 27,000, not 15. So I mean, 90% of my tax bill goes to assessments right now, and it just seems a little odd. And another question I have is, where does 36th Avenue officially start out there? How far north does that project go?
Just north of the last driveway for Patrick Hardy.
Where the drainage ditch is?
Yep, about the drainage ditch. That's about where this project would end or begin, yes.
Okay. So I guess that's our biggest issue, is we were annexed in, and now we're being told nine years later, oh, by the way, you got the stipulation, you got to be brought up to speed, and I guess none of us were aware of that.
But there's no stipulation. We're saying we're trying, it's not stipulated that you have to. We're saying this is what we'd like to do, we feel it's in the best interest of everybody in the long run.
Well, but we're being assessed 100% to do that, versus the 60-40, and that's our biggest issue, I guess.
Okay. I mean, you want, everybody wants a street, am I, am I correct?
Well, we already have a street.
Well, everybody wants the, you don't want, who doesn't want the street redone? Well, you're voting on this one. Okay.
But your, question is, you only want it done if you can get assessed at normal assessment rates. You don't want it, if, if you're going to be assessed 100%, you'd rather delay the project, I'm assuming.
Okay.
But the majority would just assume.
We're going to have another meeting on this, too. What did, what we did tonight.
Can we table this action, or do we still want to?
We don't have to.
Forward it, or?
If, if you feel comfortable, I would, I would recommend approving it, and we'll come back at the March 4th meeting with an assessment policy.
Okay.
And then that assessment policy would come forward to our March 4th, March 18th meeting, where people are then, have the ability to object, or whatever it may be, just like we do for a normal street assessment project.
Okay.
If, if you feel comfortable with that.
Mr. Lang, I mean, some of it depended on what is normal assessment, if it was, and how you look at it, if we're talking about a new development as it's coming in the city, the normal assessment would be 100%.
Correct.
If it's reconstruction, that's the 60-40, so it's not necessarily normal or abnormal, you know, it's, at what point do you see this? Is this a new development essentially coming into the city, bringing up to standards? That would be normal assessment versus a reconstruction being normal.
Yeah, go ahead. You already.
Half of this is an established neighborhood. It's not all brand-new houses.
I know. I know the area. I've been back in there.
But it, it sounds like we're all being considered, we're in a new development.
No, it's.
But that was when it was in the township.
It's new to the city. And this, this annexation, I think since Evan Mayer, that was the worst, not the worst, but the hardest thing we ever did, because annexations are not fair to everybody. We know that, and I'd never do another one if I could get away with it. But, but they're not, they're really not fair to everybody. I think we had some in, out in Lansing that it was hard on them, and if we, it was tough. Go ahead, give us.
I just wanted to mention that two of the residents.
We need your name.
Jesse Dumas, live in 3103 Sixth Street Northeast. Two of the houses, yes, they own property on Sixth Street, but their driveways aren't on it, so I don't really, you know, maybe 50% consider them part of it. The sidewalks, curb and gutters, we're, we're a pretty tight-knit community, and there's only a few of us out there walking. We all know each other, like each other, love each other in their yards. There's no need for a sidewalk.
I don't think we're doing a sidewalk.
No, no, I know, I just wanted to say that was brought up and.
Oh, no, we're not doing a sidewalk.
That was, right, but that was brought up in why it's 100%, because you're not doing that. So I just wanted to mention that. I, I see that there's no need. So I, I just wanted to mention.
There's no need, you're right, there's no need for a sidewalk out there.
So is this 60-40 what you're asking for? Would another percentage split be acceptable?
Yeah.
Some percentage of it should be paid by the city. Hang on.
Go ahead, come on up. That's what we're here for.
My name is Steve DeCarlo. I live at 3406th Street. It's, it's a new house that came in before the set-off for the taxes, so I do pay the taxes. There's three of us, yes, there's three houses out there right now that probably are assessed between 450 and 500,000. But we have lots, I see this 200-foot, our lots are 300 to 350 feet. So that means now you're getting up into $10,000, went to 100%.
For a single lot?
Single lot, yes. Terriers, about 300.
And no one that's being built. There's a house that's going to be built, there's over, they're all over 300 out there. They're two and a half acre lots. So we're taking a big hit, like 100%. I'm an oldie, and I've lived in about 10 different areas, California, Georgia, everywhere, and I've been in developments, and I've been in cities, and I've been out of cities. I've never seen this, where a city has a street, and then they come in and say, well, you need to bring it up because you're like a developer. There's been plenty of years to bring that street up, and I realize budget has been a problem. But if you want us to fix a mistake, you should take some of the cost of this, not push it all on the homeowners. And the other thing that I question is, is maybe we should delay this a year, not at 100%. Because we have one.
I see this coming up. They're asking 10% a year, how about that?
No, but the issue is, is that we have a house that's going to be built, probably starting in May.
A what?
A house, another house.
Which means?
Concrete trucks.
Mm-hmm.
Truss trucks, heavyweight.
You're going to put that on top of this.
That's kind of an ongoing thing, though, isn't it, out there? I mean, you're, they're building out there.
There's just one more house to go on that street.
Okay.
And, and.
And they're building that one.
And that one's on the, on the section on the north zone, right across the street from me. It's 3402 or something. And so that's going to, I can't see how you're going to put a couple inches down, or even the four, and then start running in them, because they're talking about 130 truckloads of dirt and stuff, and that's going to kill the road.
That's good, that's a good point.
Because that's what already killed the road, actually, was probably the start of my house two years ago.
But that's essentially what we're saying. But that's essentially what we're saying, sir, is in order to build it to city standards, that four inches that Stephen's talking about, is what is a tolerable amount that we could expect to have those types of vehicles, to have trash trucks, to have delivery trucks and those sorts of things and expect the road to hold up? That's why we don't have the city standard to cost our residents a bunch of that.
I understand your city standard, but-
Money, but, I mean, that's where we're in this kinda catch-twenty-two of it, being annexed, coming in the city and not being, you know, the township standard versus the city. Those types of things are things that the engineering department accommodates in asking for the higher thickness that we're talking about.
Okay, honestly speaking-
I, I hear what you're saying.
What you're telling me is, is it really needs to be ripped off and it should have the four inches on there. But you're giving us a choice because you don't wanna hit us with ten thousand, you wanna hit us with five thousand.
Well, I think it'd be silly to do the two inches, especially if you got the big trucks coming out there. They're gonna be out there once in a while.
On the lifespan.
I know it.
Lifespan, ten years versus thirty.
Yeah, I mean, thirty-five years, you know?
Well, I don't understand why you would even consider it two inches if you know that the two inches is not gonna be enough.
I think we're trying to come up with options.
Okay. Well, I have nothing else to say except the fact that, you know, it looks nice at two hundred feet, but when you got three hundred and fifty feet, which is the four houses down on the end, that's really hitting us hard. That's it.
Well, and I think the reason this area was annexed was, was because of the sewer issue. And I think if we probably wouldn't have been doing the sewer at that time and just done a regular annex because it was an orderly thing to do, the road would have been done at that time and would have been assessed at a hundred percent.
Right.
And because of the sewer project, the road was overlooked for a few years and now we're getting back to that point. And so, that's why we're basically still at that hundred percent point, because that's how these projects are looked at. So, I think that's part of the reason or the main reason, like Stephen said, with the history and our way of doing things in the past and with these projects, is that's why it's the hundred percent, so.
So, we'll, we'll probably take, give you some action tonight, but that doesn't mean we're doing it. We're just moving it forward to the next meeting. Does anybody-
I would like to.
Pardon?
I, I think I, listening to these folks, I think that we should look at a different assessment.
That's what Stephen said he's gonna bring to us to the next meeting, so.
That's what we're talking about. Anybody else before we close this?
All right, I think the only thing to, to add on to Paul is, if we can get a better understanding looking back of what we've done in other similar circumstances or understanding differences, that would be helpful, because obviously, nobody likes to write a check, but it at least helps that if I write a check for my street, I know that somebody else wrote one ten years ago. So, if we can get a better understanding of in situations like this, how we've treated other residents, I, that would be helpful for that.
Have we had a situation that you find comparable?
Yeah, Austin Acres.
And that was a hundred percent assessment?
Correct.
Wait, go ahead.
Well, why don't we learn from that?
We thought we did it the right way.
From repeating the same mistake then?
Well, we don't know if it was a mistake. I mean, it was obviously done back then and nobody's, nobody here was there at the time, so.
You're saying Austin Acres was a mistake?
No. No, we're saying that's how it was done, because that's how we do things. That's been our policy. And we're not saying that was a mistake. That's the last example we have to go back to of how we do things.
So, my question is, why weren't those all laid out before the annexation so we knew what we were getting into?
Well, that's a valid question.
Yeah, I mean, we'll come up with-
Don't have an answer for it.
None of us needed the sewer. None of us needed that sewer, because we all had working systems. We wanted the sewer because we knew it was gonna benefit us, but that's, I mean, so that's why we wanted the sewer, because we knew it was gonna enhance our value. This isn't really gonna do much for us.
This will add to the value.
Right, but I, I just, I need the sixty, forty to be in support of this.
I think you guys got caught up in the, the whole Lansing, was there two hundred and sixty parcels and something like that? There was a lot of homes.
Yeah, I mean, trying our best to make it as feasible as possible. People were objecting to a fifteen thousand dollar assessment at that time. If we would have proposed paving roads and doing things in addition to that, it would have drove the cost up to affect the people, it would have killed the project.
And that whole annexation process, we weren't, we were not out there looking for people to annex into the city. This was a vote from Lansing Township as a whole and you guys were part of that. So, that's the burden that bears Austin now, because you guys came all together at one time and it was a nightmare. I lived through that too. We couldn't, we couldn't do anything right according to any resident in Lansing. I can't think of one. And all we're trying to do is do what's right for the city. And for me, going back, I look at those failed septic systems and, and nobody should have to put up with those if you live in the city environment. You guys, I feel for you, you had the compliance systems, you had the lot sizes to, to have those in compliance, but the bulk of them, the great majority, didn't. And, and to have a city resident in any other part of the city put up with that, that's just unconscionable. So, again, I feel that, yeah, this is not fair, as the mayor mentioned, not everybody's gonna be treated equally. But in order to have city trucks pave those roads and law enforcement go down that gravel road, they probably don't care for that either, emergency services, something has to be done now. At the same point, maybe nothing has to be done. And do you win on that? I don't know. Austin Acres, as an example, was not a failure. Austin Acres, I'd put in front of anybody, is probably the most desirable place to live in Austin, Minnesota. Those values went up. And this could be something that you need to look at, is maybe increasing values if you do have big enough lots to sell and, and parcel off. I don't know, there's some benefit there if that's, if that's the case, but there, there, something needs to be done. And again, maybe nothing forever, and that's something. But if it's gonna be done and we're not, I, I think our policy is our policy, that we've treated these other parcels in situations similar, if we show history, that it, it becomes, you know, the cost is borne on the, on the resident, I guess that's our policy now. If, if somehow I'm just one person, if there's, if there's a way around it, I fancy myself a kinder, gentler council folk. If there is a way to help that cost and not put too much of a burden on folks that don't live out there. But it's a tough one. But again, this whole Lansing Township vote started this thing off, and we weren't looking for people to annex into the city.
That was the worst nightmare I've been through as far as work at, uh, the mayor's, it was, it was, it was bad and I didn't blame people. I mean, they weren't, it's hard to treat people fair and stuff like this and you can't always. But I think what we're gonna do is, we'll go back, we'll look at what other projects have done like this. If we've done ten projects like this and they all got assessed the way we're projecting the assessment for you, we're probably gonna determine it's fair to give you the hundred percent. If we've made breaks, I mean, it's up to the council too, but if we've made breaks and there's ways we can do it, then maybe we can do that. But that's, but that's what we'll look at in the next two weeks. Anybody else? I thank everybody for coming. I will say, it's, it impresses us when, you know, most of a section comes like this, so it makes a difference when you come in. For sure it does. I thank you for doing so. Terry, what? Uh, Terry, everybody doesn't know who you are. You wanna come up here?
Terry Fox.
I thought the rich people didn't live out there.
No. You know, one question I do have is, when this area was annexed, it still was in a developer's stage, the, the north section. That had not been fully developed. There's a road to the north and the six lots that we're referring to. So, that was still, there was still four lots that were in development stage. And I guess the only question I'd like to bring up is, it was annexed, it wasn't a development stage, should there have been some type of-
Agreement?
Agreement with the developer to finish that other thing when it was annexed? It's just a question, you know, because it was being developed yet, so technically, and I'm not even gonna go there, Stephen knows where I'm going, but there's an initial part of a road that's not gonna be repaired. And should some of that have been something in the future? If something is annexed, it's in a development stage yet, should that be looked at before it's annexed?
You're asking for us to look at a road that hasn't been repaired?
No, no. But I'm saying in the future, Mr. Steen, if something's gonna be annexed and it's still in the development stage and not up to the city's standards, should a developer bring it up to the standards before it's annexed? That's just a question, something for the council to, to think about, so.
Typically, yeah, I do think we do require-
And this was still in a development stage. And there's a section road out there plus the six lots that were still under development. And my question is, is before something is annexed, can it or should it be in the, in the laws of, okay, before we annex, it has to be brought up, so.
It's something we should look at.
It's something to look at. It's, it's nothing that's gonna be happening now, I totally realize that.
No, but that's a good question.
But I'm just saying, is that something that should be addressed prior to?
Yeah, that's a good question. Very good question.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, so you know what we're gonna do? We'll probably pass a motion tonight and then in two weeks, we'll look at, you know, we'll have another meeting and at that point, we'll make it, is that when we make our determination? Stephen, in two weeks?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, oh, yeah, we'll do it at the work session in two weeks and then the next meeting. So, if there's nobody else, everybody's had their say?
The only thing I would just add is some of, I know, I know. I just wanted, some of those dates may change to meet notification requirements. If, if, if we delay some of the decision on what the assessment's going to be, things like that, we may have to delay the assessment hearing, that's all.
There's no rush, that's for sure.
So, so can the residents expect that they'll get direct communication about what the next step is?
Through notice from our clerk's department, through our assessment notices, yes.
Okay. Okay, with that, we need a resolution for ordering improvement, approving plans and specifications for ordering advertisements for bids for number nine.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero.
I want to thank everybody for coming in and, really, it's, it's good to hear from people out that live in the project.
Thank you.
All right, we're, all right, number ten, under bid opening and award, number ten is a resolution receiving bids for biosolids removal. Stephen?
Uh, yes, on February twelfth, we accepted bids for biosolids hauling at our wastewater treatment plant. This is a two-year contract. We haul in the spring and in the fall. And Oyer Trucking and Pumping LLC, they were the only bidder for the two-year contract in the amount of six hundred and ninety-eight thousand, four hundred dollars. In looking back at historical numbers, Oyer Trucking has, has bid our projects for a number of years. This dollar amount is about two hundred thousand dollars more than it has been in the past. And just trying to analyze that a little bit, I think there was some competitive bidding going on some of those previous years. And I think some of those other contractors did not bid this year anticipating the, they couldn't meet those lower rates that Oyer was bidding in the past. Looking at the bid from this year, it's, yes, it is higher, but it's, it's probably more in the range where it needs to be. It does still fall within our budget for, for two years. Our budget would be seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a two-year biosolids hauling, which this, this bid just below seven hundred thousand falls within our budget. So, we've kinda been budgeting for those higher numbers. Our, our options for this with this higher bid and only one bidder would be to reject all bids and rebid the project. Typically, when you rebid a project, you'll change something, you'll try and figure out why it was high and, and change it. In this case, there's nothing we can really change. We have X amount of liquid that needs to be hauled, we have farms identified that we haul it to, there's nothing we can really change. So, just our analysis of it, our looking at it, even though it is higher than, than normal, we would recommend awarding the bid to Oyer Trucking and Pumping.
Awesome. Any comments? Any? If not, we need a resolution for ten.
How long does it, sorry, how long does it take to rebid? Is that a, like a substantial investment of city staff resources and months or? Um, no, we have to advertise a project for three weeks, twenty-one days to three weeks. So, we'll usually advertise for about a month to get it out there to respective bidders that maybe have bid in the past. We advertise it in specific locations that contractors and bidders know to go to to see if there are bid openings coming up. So, it takes about four weeks. And, 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 sorry, typically, we haul sludge in the spring, starting, if, if conditions are perfect, we'd like to start hauling around middle of April. So, we've got about two months from right now to do that process.
Do you think it, you'll get a significantly different result if you rebid?
We might get a significantly higher bid, assuming.
It could be higher. I, I don't think it would be significantly different, no.
I think for the last five years, we've been getting a pretty good break from Oyer bidding so low. And I know he came to council one year and we didn't give it to him and, and he had, he's passionate in the biosolids. He is passionate. So, I, I think we just count that we've, you know, we're gonna spend a little money this year, but we've saved plenty on his low bids prior and maybe this'll kick it up a notch next year for people bidding, or two years from now for bidding.
Okay, anybody else? If not, we need a resolution.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Under petitions and requests, eleven is a resolution setting a public hearing for March eighteenth, two thousand nineteen for street improvement project assessments.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Stephen, uh, Tom?
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Because under state law, they only can have one type of gambling going on there with one organization.
Do we know if they have any others?
Yes, they currently do.
Have they agreed to terminate those?
Yes, they have, but we would want that in the resolution, just so they, we make sure it's done.
Okay, with that stipulation added, we need a resolution. Or is any questions? If not, we need a resolution.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number 13 is a resolution authorizing the application of a Minnesota DNR grant for pickleball courts. Tom, is this yours?
Yeah, I'm taking it from Park and Rec's director, Kim Underwood. This is actually one memo related to the next two agenda items, a DNR grant for pickleball courts and another DNR grant for Port and Play Surface Playground. Park and Rec's director, Kim Underwood, is working on some funding to help fund the pickleball courts in coordination with the foundation grant, and also the Port and Play Surface Grant. So she's found a couple of grant opportunities through the DNR that requires application or requires the attached resolutions, as worded as they are, for the applications. It would then allow us to potentially access up to 50 percent of the cost of the project. So this would help out with both projects, and at this point in time, we would request council pass a separate resolution for both number 13 and 14.
Council, any questions on 13 or 14?
Yes, I just want to say that these were discussed at the last Park and Rec board meeting, and the board did recommend them to council for approval.
Anybody else? If not, we need a resolution for 13.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
And we need a resolution for 14, authorizing the application of a Minnesota DNR grant for Port and Play Surface Playground.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
And we need a resolution for 14, authorizing the application of a Minnesota DNR grant for Port and Play Surface Playground.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number 15 is a resolution approving a revised access agreement for site cleanup work. Stephen?
Yes, this is for the former MGP site located at Oakland Avenue East and Fourth Street Southeast, just south of City Hall here. And this is just a revised access agreement to allow them to continue their cleanup operations further to the south along the Cedar River. We recommend approval.
Council, anything? If not, we need the resolution for 15.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Number 16 is a resolution accepting donations to the city. We need a resolution. So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number 17, our final motion is a motion appointing Rita Schrock to the planning commission term expiring December 31st, 2021. Anybody has any questions? I'll take it, because I know Rita. If not, we need a motion.
So move. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we're to citizens addressing the council. And I don't, is there anybody here that wants to address the council? Half of your news media. Okay. If not, honorary council member comments. Rain, I suppose this is kind of confusing to you, isn't it?
Yeah.
We're getting into, into a lot of technical stuff I would assume you're probably not used to, but, you know, if you have any comments on it, let us know, okay? We'll call on you at the work session afterwards, too. Reports and recommendations. We'll start with Paul.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Jason?
Just want to recognize the Austin Packer Dance Team for getting to the state finals, representing the community incredibly well, and a special recognition for Mr. Lang, whose daughter Madison is one of the captains. So I know at least of two little girls and many more in the community who are very impressed by their performance.
Excellent. Laura?
I just wanted to say thank you to our plow drivers and other city workers who have gotten quite a bit of overtime this winter and no rest for the wicked, it sounds like.
They're earning every penny of it, too.
Mm-hmm.
Jeff?
I just want to commend the engineering department for once again picking a street project that included a city council member.
You're gonna have the whole city council gone pretty soon.
Who says they can't be fair?
Everybody pretty much covered, don't we?
Paul needs one.
I got nothing.
Nothing, I hope.
Yep, looking out for you.
Great. Pay attention.
Yes. We have swearing-in ceremony tomorrow for Captain David McKeeken to be our new police chief. That'll be at 9:30 in the council chambers and be effective for his new leadership on the 21st. So we're excited, we're excited about that. And then got the opportunity to testify in behalf of House File 411, which will provide money for the Turtle Creek 2 project, where Representative Poppy's carrying that overall bill, and appreciate her efforts in that, as well as was able to testify in regards to an affordable housing report that they had, and talked about Austin's interest for housing and how that plays in the picture of their concerns about housing in the metro area, that they not forget about greater Minnesota cities. And then we received word today in Governor Wal's budget that there's money for LGA to bring us back to our 2002 levels, something we've been advocating for, for years now. And it's very exciting to see the governor put that in his budget, and just one part of the process, but a very important one. So we're excited to see that. So that's all I have, and then Stephen has something.
I think it's important to note, though, on that LGA, is even when we get back to 2002, we're still at 40 percent less buying power than we were in 2002. I believe that's what they said at that meeting. So it's nice to get it back to 2002, but it doesn't really bring it back to 2002.
Where are we at now?
Cup half full, Mayor, cup half full.
I didn't get to talk very much tonight, so I wanted to add one more. With the snow that we're anticipating for tonight, we're hearing anywhere from six to eight, 10 inches of snow. So we are calling a snow emergency for tomorrow. The snow emergency will go into effect at 8:00 AM on Wednesday, February 20th. So residents and people going to work, parking on the street, need to park with the calendar. So people should park on the even side on Wednesday, move their vehicles to the, so people park on the even side. We plow the odd, and then it switches over on Thursday. So we look at each snowfall differently. Right now, our boulevards are full of snow. There's no room for the snow. Roads are getting narrow, and we're having a little trouble with plows getting down roadways when there's vehicles parked on both sides. So that's why we're calling the snow emergency now, to get all the vehicles over to one side. We can plow that legal side, and it causes the snow removal process to linger over into two and three days, which is why we tend to not call these only when we have to. But in this case, with what we're hearing for the snowfall, we thought it'd be appropriate to call a snow emergency, again, beginning tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM.
How does the public, how are they notified?
So we have a list. We notify the newspapers, the TV stations, and our clerk's department also posts it on our Facebook site. So we have some standard places where we try to get that information out.
And what is even and odd? What even, what?
So, again, what we tell the people to do is park with the calendar. So tomorrow...
It's the house number.
House number, yes, yes.
They only miss it once.
And we will be...
And if we got eight inches of snow...
Yeah, we'll flip signs down around town, and there will be ticketing and towing for vehicles that are parked illegally.
Do we ever knock down the banks at the, I mean, some of these corners you pull up to now, you have to get halfway in the street before you can see if anybody's coming.
The guy'll make you cake, and so I'm in that boat.
Yeah, we do. But we need, we need time in between the storms to do that. And that's, we're just not getting that time right now, so that's another reason for calling the snow emergency.
I've got complaints on that, mostly from my wife.
That's an important constituency.
That's it, then, right? We need, anybody else have anything? If not, we need a motion to adjourn to Monday, March 4th, 2019, at 5:30.
So moved.
Second.
Take a five, 10-minute break, meet in the small conference room for us all.